All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the funding believed in.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose hope we redeem and trust us for all.
All right, we're gonna go a little out of order. We have our auditor Chip Clark, and we'll allow him to give us a recap of the audit.
Thank you. Good evening. Does everybody have a copy of the financials? I thought I passed it out for the board members that weren't at the audit committee meeting. Okay, great. What you have in front of you, and I met with the audit committee prior to this meeting to go over the financials in detail. I'm gonna provide you a summary of the results of this year's audit. Feel free, anytime if you have a question, feel free to interrupt me and ask the question as I go through it. But I'm just gonna give you a condensed version of the results of this year's audit and discuss some changes this year that occurred relative to some accounting standards that we had to implement. So you have two packets in front of you. One is for the extra classroom activity funds, and the other is for the overall basic financial statements. I'm gonna go over the basic financial statements first, then I'll go over the extra classroom afterwards. In your sleeve of the basic financial statements, you're gonna see a communication letter. This is a required communication letter. If there's any difficulties or disagreements, we would note those in this letter. If there's any uncorrected misstatements, we would note those. Any changes in accounting policies or accounting standards, we note those. And you will see in about a third of the page down, we implemented what's called Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75, which required us to book an accrual for OPEB, the full accrual for your other post-employment benefits, so your health insurance, based on contractual arrangements. That was new this year that we implemented. And as we go through the financial statements, I'll show you those numbers. They're large numbers. I'll show you where that impacted the financial statements. So, a clean letter relative to the performance of the audit. We were able to perform our procedures and opine on the financial statements effectively. Third page in, you'll see a schedule of audit findings and recommendations. You're gonna see here, real property tax law limits your unassigned fund balance to 4%. You're at 6.6% this year. $1,372,678 in unassigned fund balance. So just slightly over that 4% limitation. And based on looking at your reserves, it's not really a bad thing to have a little excess on assigned fund balance and total fund balances is not a bad thing, but it's not in compliance with real property tax law so required to report it.
Isn't this, is that similar to last year's as well? Those balances look pretty similar.
I don't think you were over the 4% last year.
I think we were just at, yeah. I don't think we were over number. I think we were just at it.
You were just at 4%.
It just seems like that was a common note from last year, too.
It's common, but I don't think that was actually a comment last year. I'll double check.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think it was. To get into the basic financial statements, I'm gonna move you to page one. This is our opinion letter. And you'll see, the second to the last paragraph is our opinion paragraph. And this is what's called unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that we can provide in an audit. And then, at the very bottom, you're gonna see the new accounting standard that I just was discussing relative to GASB 75. Pages three through 12 of the financials are what's called a management discussion and analysis, basically an executive summary of the financial statements. I'm gonna skip through the management discussion analysis, go right to the actual financial statements and summarize those financial statements for you. And they begin on page 13. On page 13 is your statement in net position. You'll see total assets and deferred outflow of resources of $32 million. 23.6 million of your total assets is your capital assets, so your buildings, your equipment, net of accumulated depreciation. So roughly 74% of your total assets is in your capital assets. Total liabilities, about 2/3 of the page down, of $49.5 million. And you're gonna see just above that number, you're gonna see your other post-employment benefits. That's your GASB 75 number. So that's an actuarially determined number. The district contracts with an actuary that provides us with, based on your contractual benefits, the liability of the district for its retirees and actives based on mortality rates. And so that's roughly 42.2 million, or 85% of your total liabilities, is in accordance with GASB 75 accrual. Last year, you had accumulated roughly 16.2 million in the accrual. This year, it changed. So you're required to book the whole thing. So it went from 16 million last year to 42 million this year. And the impact of that is significant. In your total net position, you're gonna see a deficit of $19.3 million. And that's because of the GASB 75 accrual. It's an accounting deficit because with the GASB 75, you have a liability but no way of funding that liability. So there's no asset, only a liability, which throws you into a deficit. Which is, every municipality across the state's gonna have a deficit. Anybody that has OPEB, large OPEB benefits, like school districts, are gonna have a deficit. So it's not unusual to that, in that respect, to have a deficit. I've been warning districts that they're gonna go into a deficit based on this liability for the last two or three years. Page 14, we get into the statement of activities for your government-wide. Total functional expense of $23.4 million, offset by charges for services of $165,945. Operating grants for your special aid funds of $1.5 million. Capital grants of $707,000, offset by general revenues of $19.5 million, made up mainly of real property taxes and STAR of $6.5 million, and your state and federal sources of $12.8 million. One thing I will note is, if you look down towards midway in the page, you're gonna see prior period adjustments there of $26 million. That's in accordance with GASB 75. So that was required restatement to comply with GASB 75. Bringing you to the net position deficit of $19.3 million. To get into familiar territory here on page 15 is your fund statement. So this is what you're used to seeing with your general funds, school lunch fund, special aid, debt service, and capital. I'll focus most of my attention on the general fund. Total assets in the general fund of $3,339,083. Total liabilities of $1,034,788. Leaving you with total fund balance at the end of the year of $2.3 million. That $2.3 million is made up of your unassigned fund balance of $1,372,678. That represents 6.6% of the subsequent year's budget. So that number is the number that is subject to real property tax law. Your assigned fund balance of $761,000, and restricted fund balance, or your reserves, of $169,877. Page 16 is a reconciliation statement required by government accounting standards. Page 17 is your statement of revenues, expenses, changes of fund balance for your fund statements, showing general fund revenues of $19.5 million. General fund expenditures of $19.6 million. Inter-fund transfer revenue of $96,000, which came from the debt service fund, leaving you with excess revenues over expenditures of $7,889. On page 18 is another reconciliation statement between your fund statements and your government-wide required by GASB. You know, it's good sometimes if you're questioning the differences between your fund statements and your government-wide statements that I'm going through. These are good statements to read through. They kinda, they show you the differences, some of the things, your long-term assets, your long-term liabilities that differentiate your fund statements from your government-wide financials. It's useful information. On page 19 is your statement of fiduciary net position for your trust and agency fund, as well as your scholarship fund. On page 20 is the statement of changes in net position for your scholarship fund, leaving you with total net position in your scholarship fund of $162,518. Pages 21 through 45 are your required note disclosures. I won't go through the note disclosures, but there's useful information that define the accounting standards that we follow as well as further break out some of the numbers that are in your basic financial statements. But I'll move you to page 46, which is your schedule of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget to actual for the general fund. And here you'll see total final budget and the revenues of $19.7 million. Total actual expenditures came in slightly under at $19,477,765. That's not including your other financing sources. Total expenditure budget, final budget of $20.6 million. Actual expenditures came in at $19.6 million. Slight variance there of $953,837. Pages 47 and 48 are required schedules. 49 as well is a required schedule in accordance with the GASB. Page 50 is a required schedule by SED showing your changes in your budget from adopted budget to your final budget, as well as the real property tax law limit calculation, showing 6.6% of unassigned fund balance. Page 51 is a schedule of capital projects. Page 52 is a required schedule for net investment in your capital assets. Page 53 is required, all school districts required to have an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Requires us to gain an understanding of the district's internal control. Test those internal controls to ensure that they're effective and they're implemented. And you have a clean letter relative to internal controls of the district over financial reporting. So no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses on internal controls. Page 55, because you receive over $750,000 in federal monies, required to do an audit in accordance with uniform guidance or single audit. Requires us to gain an understanding of the internal controls over compliance for your federal awards and test for compliance over specific programs or major programs. And we have a clean letter relative to the compliance testing that we did over your federal programs. Page 57 breaks out those federal awards by USDA or your school lunch of $371,821. And then through the U.S. Department of Education for your Title I grants and your IDEA or your special education grants of $902,273. Total federal awards expended of $1,274,094. And then on page 59, you'll see the schedule of findings and questioning costs, which there was no findings relative to the financial statement audit or on the compliance audit, and showing the major programs tested of the special ed program. That's all I have on the overall basic financial statements. Any questions on this before I go into the extra classroom? Which won't take long. Okay, to get into the extra classroom, extra classroom, you're gonna see, in the sleeve, you're gonna see two letters. First letter I'm gonna go over is the communication with those charged with governance, which is similar to the letter I just went over on your basic financial statements. There was no difficulties or disagreements in performing our audit procedures over extra classroom. However, you know, on the next statement, you're gonna see what we call a significant deficiency that I'll go over relative to cash receipts in the extra classroom fund. So on the next letter, on the second page, you're gonna see the significant deficiency relative to cash receipts. And as I've discussed at past meetings and past audits, this is a very common deficiency for extra classroom funds. All of our school districts across the state that we do have significant deficiencies because of how extra classroom activities work. They're just, they don't meet the same level of internal control that the district office has to meet based on how they run. So they have multiple students operating fundraising activities. They just, the way they inherently operate, there's no way to meet that bar to have an unmodified or clean opinion. So, every school district we do, we do roughly 45 school districts across the state, have a qualified opinion regarding these cash receipts. So it's just, it's not a reflection on the school district. It's really a reflection on how extra classroom activities operate. And next, to get into the overall financial statements of the extra classroom fund, we're mainly dealing with just cash. So I'll move you to page, page three. You have $66,113 in cash for all your clubs. On page four, total revenues for all your clubs of $124,978. Expenditures for club activity of $123,468. Leaving you with a slight surplus in club activity and a fund equity of $66,113. And then on page six, you're gonna see a breakout of the club activity by club and the cash balances at the end of the year. Leaving you with total cash of, again, $66,113. And that's all I have. Any questions on the extra classroom activity fund audit? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from November 6.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. As well as the 2C approval of the minutes from November 13. You have a motion?
Make it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And then we have the approval of the CSE and CPSE recommendations. If there are no questions, I'll ask your motion. Otherwise, if you do have questions, we'll go into the sec.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, we are up to three, public comment. Before I start public comment, it looks like we have a lot of students here. So traditionally, we ask that you state your name. So we'll start with the front row.
Dylan Jacob.
Brandon McCormack.
Michael Phillips.
John Holland.
Kayla Robinson.
Chandler Moon.
Pungar Basket.
Nikhil Murray.
Anthony Adams Trump.
Justin Brawl.
Jacob Schofield.
Ken Schofield.
Brandon Robinson.
Dan Burns.
Emily Seven.
David Brooks.
Zach Gunn.
Colleen Crater.
Logan Holby.
You're ready.
Ken Swarling.
All right, so I know somebody's gonna be for government class. Okay, but do we have other visitors? Four, five. Two, four, five. All right, welcome. And for the government class, if we did not sign your papers, make sure that after the meeting we'll get signatures. All right, is there any public comment? Okay, we're up to four discussion items. The policy committee. We set your dates, right? No, we have to. Okay. We don't know that yet. We haven't set that. The 12th? Is that what you said?
I think it was the 12th. That's a Wednesday, I believe.
I think that's what you said.
Right, that's the better day for me if that works for you guys.
If it's something different, contact.
Still doing five?
That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, it's 12.
So that will avoid the December 13th, which is the high school concert. And we have the elementary concert coming up Thursday.
Thursday.
The next topic that I have is the retreat. We kinda gave a list of ideas, possibly doing a half with our attorney and half with NISP. Or we can do, you know, a day session, you know, with NISP, and maybe an evening session with the attorney. You know, if there's a topic that you really wanna go over, let me know. And then we can try to set it up for January or February with NISP, just to get on their schedule. Just let me know whether, I guess we can contact them, maybe see what days they have available, and then put it out.
Right.
Okay, do that. Were there any of the topics that are listed? Any of them a priority? Or you wanna let me know on them? I know we have two missing, so it's kinda hard to come up with a consensus. And Larry, you had mentioned for special education, March 6. Oh, that's our budget workshop date.
That's our workshop date, right. So if you decide to use that for an evening session
as a retreat, we'll keep it as a workshop. Okay. I had questioned Larry about special education training at the board level. And he knows of an individual that may be very good, but possibly opening up to BOCs, and doing a BOCs training. So we'll look into that and maybe that'll either be a day or evening, depending on what the individual could schedule.
If we could get a couple of school districts interested in some training in that, then obviously probably could reduce the cost if there were the cost. Be shared that way, you know.
Right.
That'd be helpful, that we could have a... I mean, I know we go in executive session periodically and we discuss it, but if you had some of the education behind it to understand better. We're never gonna understand why the state makes all the mandates they make, but maybe we can get a...
Better understanding of all, yeah.
Yeah, speaking of state mandates, is there anything we wanna try to capture with the new policies that the states come down with, with harassment policies as far as mandated training? That's due by, what, October next year? The actual training component?
Well, I think you're right.
I don't know if you wanna try to piggyback that in because I'm sure that not only staff, but board members have to have it as well. So maybe one of those workshops, we can work it in where it's taken care of. And maybe it doesn't have to be the spring one. It can be a later workshop in the year, but should be on the...
And I don't know if you've had a chance, will it be someone internally doing that training? Or will BOCs come down and personally?
We haven't checked that out. I haven't checked that out. I mean, I can certainly find out if they've got somebody.
Okay, I know we're at the same situation with that at the town level, you know, having an employee do the training or in the future should we have? Because this is an annual training. Or have someone come in at the state level and perform that training annually? Pick a date and then everybody's there and... Okay, so get back to me on what your interest may be as far as the topics. And then we can look into, in the meantime, we'll look into NISP's schedule.
I think the schedule will probably determine, be determined based on your topics because they have different specialists.
Okay, all right, so... Shall we say list them by priority? Maybe do three? And then just list them by priority and then we can decide which ones are favorable? All right. So we have no correspondence at this time. And we've done our presentation. So Chip Clark. Okay, are there additions to the agenda?
We do. First of all, I did update the budget transfer reports today. We have final for October. And then there was one additional item for November. So Ms. McGuire gave me two new reports, and that is in the packet. And we do have one new item, which is a consent appointment, which Miller has our asbestos designated. And that will be temporary until we have a permanent person.
Okay. So we're up to eight, the consent agenda. And of course, as usual, our consent agenda covers the financial reports, our budget transfers, our declared surplus, a couple sewing machines, things like that. And we have the personnel, and this is the resignations. Just going through. And the appointments. Emergency appointments, yes. And then... Okay, so F, yes. That's why I wasn't... Like, we're in the unmade leave, so yes. And then the emergency appointments, of course. And then athletic appointments. So are there any questions on the consent agenda? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We are up to new business. We have several donations. We have $150 from Dennis and Cindy Ammon. And this is in memory of Val Vogel for the Townsend School Library. $25 from Gary and Sue Nightingale, as well as for Val Vogel memory. We have a number of shares of the Marriott common stock, equivalent to $10,000. This is from Mary Lou Towner to the football and field hockey teams. We split equally between them and use as the coaches' discretion. We have forthcoming is the United Presbyterian Church Peace Offering. And that's for $193.50 for the anti-bullying program at Townsend School. The $5,000 from an anonymous donor to the Mr. Douglas Bartlett Scholarship Award. $25 from the International Associate for the machinist and aerospace workers to the Townsend School Elementary. And this is in memory of Jeff Fairchild. $40 from Crystal and Mark Jacobs to the varsity club for leaf breaking, as well as $25 from John and Linda Clark to the varsity club for leaf breaking. $300 from... Three hundred dollars from Coughlin and Gearhart for the speech and debate forensics and a hundred dollars from Steve and Melissa Rauw. And that's for the high school library. Do we have a motion to accept the very generous donations?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, so this is nine B, to accept the independent auditors' report.
Move it.
Which, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. All right, nine C, Create AVP Activities Coordinator, Advisory Position. And this is Noel Granger and Christina Hewitt, right? Are there any questions on that? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. We have a personal leave of absence. This is from Adam Hoover's lead.
Most of the committees.
Yep, from the CPSC and the Subcommittee Chairs.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. And then we have the Personnel Emergency Appointment and Approvals. This would be the appointment of Adam Hoover, be appointed as Acting Middle School Principal effective November twenty-sixth through June thirtieth and to be paid his Director of Special Education salary plus a stipend. We have Tara Sackett, Acting CSC Chairperson as a teacher on special assignment effective November, November twenty-sixth through December, I'm sorry, June thirtieth. And those committees will be Committee on Special Education, Subcommittee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. And then we have the emergency appointment of Arthur Loomis, be appointed as Dean of Student as teacher on special assignment to fulfill an administrative internship. That's gonna be effective November twenty-sixth through June thirtieth. He paid his teacher salary plus stipend. And we also have Civil Service position to appoint Brenda McDonald to a non-competitive position of teacher aide and that will commence on November ninth. And then we have the VP Coordinator, Noel Granger. And then the appointment of Arthur Loomis as the DASV, or DASV Coordinator. And then the appointment of Adam Hoover to the District Safety Committee, District Incident Teams, the Elementary School, Middle and High School, the Links and the Teacher Assistant Program Committee. And then Arthur Loomis to the District Safety Committee, District Incident Teams, Elementary and Middle and High School.
Just the middle and high school.
Oh, yes, I'm, I apologize. Yes, Elementary, Middle, High School. That's quite few. Do we have any questions? Motion?
As presented.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. All right, we are up to F, Personnel Appointment, Acting Middle School Principal to Assume Responsibilities for Petty Cash Fund. We have a motion.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. And then we have the approvals of the stipends and that would be the, these are, well, I'll read them, seventy-five hundred prorated, that would be for Adam Hoover, Acting Middle School Principal, sixty-five hundred prorated for Arthur Loomis as Dean of Students, seventy-five hundred prorated for Tara Sackett as Acting CSC Chairperson and then fifteen hundred for Noel Granger as AVP Activities Coordinator. There's no discussion on them. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. All right, we are up to ten, old business. And this is to change the dates, right?
This is for Mr. McMullen and Ms. Erlinson, I should have included due to retirement.
Due to retirement, okay. So do we have a motion to accept the resignation of Thomas McMullen effective as November twenty-third and the resignation of Carol Erlinson due to retirement as of December thirty-first?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. All right, and we are up to administrative remarks.
So I will look over to my right here and, well, as long as I'm a new young school principal, go first, so we'll go down to this side and ask Jane if she has anything she'd like to toss out.
I think it's been a very active month. We've had Dr. Lori Strong has been working with the grade six team. She's had two visits with them and I've got to say that how much I admire those teachers because they've taken everything that she has recommended and they've run with it and done extra. So well done to the grade six team. They are really working hard on literacy. In one particular period, when all grade six teachers, regardless of subject area, they all teach literacy and they've all got the curriculum together and their assessments and their diagnostics are all completed and that today they were actually working out minute by minute, every ten minutes, what the children will be doing in each of the lessons on each day of the week. So they're very, very organized. Tomorrow, Lori Strong is working with grade one. She's met with kindergarten and she has met with grade two and they are equally excited about some of the things that she's been recommending. And Mike and I went to a demonstration by a lot of companies who offer a universal screener so that we can screen all children K through twelve for literacy, which will then, depending on the results, will put them into a track for remediation and support to bring them back into, back up to reading levels. So a very exciting time and thank you to all the teachers, they're doing a brilliant job.
Just a couple of comments on the audit report. It was, the fund balance last year was four point two percent, so we did have the comment, but it was barely over the four percent. The increase this year was really to tax sursharing reserve that we had, that we closed and that gets folded into the unreserved fund balance. So even though we had a very small, I guess, not necessarily profitable, we ended up having more revenue than expenses by about eight thousand dollars last year, the increase in fund balance was because of the tax sursharing being closed into that. So that's where we came to this expense.
Do you, do you see that the SB seventy-five, is that gonna impact credit lines? What is the main purpose of folding that in?
Main purpose? It was, it's supposed to be at a government level so that everybody's on the same plane if creditors were to look. The only challenge with that is that they're only legislating that we book the liability, but we have no ability to have an asset on the other side. So generally speaking, if you're in a corporate environment and you have that kind of thing, you would have to have cash set aside to fund those retirement pain, or retirement benefits to people. Districts and municipalities don't have to do that in New York State, so what they're asking us to, requiring us, I should say, to book the liability for that. So that's why we are in that deficit position.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
I'd like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the appointment of Mr. Loomis to the position of Dean of Students. He's already made an impact this past week and it's freed me up to deal with a lot of opportunity to be in the classroom much more. I pretty much waded through most of the examination of our secondary staff and I'm very happy to report that I've seen some extraordinary instruction as I've been here. And I'm looking forward to dealing with that piece of it. My responsibility, I'm a little more active right now, I'm just waiting forward. So again, thank you.
Coming out of Townsend, everyone's teaching, kids are working hard. Go to third grade right now, they're taking turns using the Lego robotics as one of their activities they do during the day, which is pretty cool. The kids know quite a bit and they're working through that, so it's just a neat thing to watch them problem solve. We had our first meeting in the ad club and we started right out planting. I'd set up some grow lights in one of the classrooms and so everybody planted stuff, things in the little cells, plants are already starting to come up. So our next meeting is Monday, we're gonna sort of, we sort of did the hands-on activity first and then we're gonna go back and talk about the wine. But we wanted to do that first piece. So every, so we had four, we have forty-five in the club and we had forty-one attend.
Wow.
There were some who had conflicts, but we're gonna have about forty-five in the club, third, fourth and fifth. And then we also, last week, oh, we started rehearsals, we're gonna do another Towns and Country Music Comedy Show, January nineteenth, and we started our first rehearsal. So it's just fun, something to do after school and the people are starting to get excited about it. So mark your calendars for January nineteenth, tickets will go fast, I hope.
Adam?
I'm excited to be back in the middle school. My wife would tell you that middle schoolers are my people. I don't know exactly what that means. I'm excited to be working with them again. Excited to have Mr. Loomis working with me, like Mr. Drew Prosetta. Didn't have to go through the stage of not being able to get out of the office and dealing with things that Mr. Loomis has been there from the start with me. It's, it's exciting to be able to go into the classrooms and see our teachers teaching and see what they're doing with the kids, so I look forward to continuing to be able to do that.
So I have in front of me BOSI Services Guides, if any of you would like to take a look at these for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, you're welcome to take one with you. And I have a few extras that I'm going to be sharing with these folks over here as well. So if you'd like to take one when we leave tonight, by all means, please do so. The WTA, as I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, it asked that our Educational Policy Committee, which was a contractual committee that they would, that was put together here years ago and at some point didn't meet as regularly, but they asked that that regular meeting start back up. We had our first meeting tonight. It was, Mike pretty much chaired it to start. I came in a little bit later, but the conversation, they were basically brainstorming about some of the things that they want to be talking about in the next couple of months and so we'll be hearing from, from them, but all in all, I thought it was a pretty good meeting. And so that ends that. I had another congenial community group meeting today. I, I can't say that there was a specific piece that I need, that I wanted to bring here to the board, but I just wanted to let you know that we've been meeting regularly and today was another one of those days and it was a, it was a, it was a very good meeting. I'm enjoying speaking with all the folks and one of the nice things about that committee, I think, is that you get to hear a perspective that you don't necessarily hear every day in education. And so that's, that's refreshing and it also, I think, keeps us grounded, Walton and, you know, in community, so I, I really enjoyed that. I have, I'm, we're still negotiating with a couple of our groups. WTA will be meeting with, with me and Chris Wilkinson this week. And next week I'm meeting with Wespa and our conversations have been healthy and cordial and everything's been very good. I would like to, in executive session, give you some update on that, on those conversations. Adam and Artie, we've scheduled a meeting with them once a week for a period of time. Jane and I are gonna be sitting down with them from, probably from now until the end of the year as a mentoring activity. I mean, certainly we get to meet with them at other times, but we're actually trying to set aside some time when they can sit at the table with us and they can say, hey, you know, I've got a frustration about this or I wonder about that and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to assist them with that. We need to bring these other fine gentlemen and we can do that as well. And our first meeting was last week and Adam actually had a question that I think I talked at length, but I hope it was helpful, but we're gonna have a lot more meetings like, like that weekly. Legislative luncheon, just as a reminder, is the fourteenth of the month, BOSI's wine and you and I are on, right? And I do have, I just got it today, so and I didn't get a chance to copy it off for you, but I, I'll put it in your next packet, which is the draft for the position statement for, that we put together as a combined, instead of BOSI's component schools. So I'll let you see that, I mean, you can look at it tonight if you want, but I'll certainly send it to you. We do have a discrepancy count on the calendar that was brought to my attention and I did a little research on that and I just wanted to let everybody know. Our printed calendar that went out says that no school, New Year's Eve and district offices closed, but the approved board calendar, which shows up in the information guide and also a couple of other documents, shows that yes, we're closed to students, but the district offices are, are not necessarily closed. So I'm just bringing that out to you, we, because this is the one I'm going by at this point, you know, because it says approved by the board and a day of that, so that's, I just want you to know that in case anybody hits you up with the fact that our BOSI's printed calendar may have shown a date that was inconsistent with what you approved. Okay? In-house, we did an immunization audit. We, we check our records and make sure all of our students have proper immunizations, that sort of thing. We do have a small group of students who are deficient in a couple of their immunizations and we have taken action to notify those families. Problem with that is you get into a little short window because, you know, the state likes to make sure everybody's got their immunizations and then once you find out about that and you say, hey, you don't have your, all your immunizations, you have to get this particular immunization. The state usually says to us, you know, make sure you get that done by twenty days or so, you know, and so it, it becomes fast and serious and a little tough for parents to, you know, maybe schedule an appointment and that sort of thing. So we try to be understanding about it and we will try to be understanding about it, but at the same time, we have to make sure that that's done. So again, let, just letting you know, and we have sent all the notifications out or we, actually we're in the process, they're gonna go out tomorrow morning, bright and early. So that clock will start ticking.
Were there many?
All told, district-wide, about twenty. You know, and, and when you're talking about the number of immunizations, we're, we're not talking about students who have no immunizations, you know, we're talking about, I don't know the exact numbers here, but you have to have seven and they've got six. It's that kind of thing. Okay? We have been experiencing a shortage on subs at all levels, whether it be teacher, driver, cafeteria, cleaner, that sort of thing. So we're going to be investing in some signs and putting some outside so when people drive by, I know, you know, it might look a little tacky for some folks at first, but we need to let folks know that we need to have subs and we're encouraging folks if they feel like they are. they feel like they are qualified for any of those duties, to come in, and we'll point them in the right direction, tell them, you know, show them whether or not they aren't qualified. Some folks need to have, you know, background checks and things of that sort for some, for some areas, and, you know, we're prepared to address that, but we're just trying to get some more subs on our list, so that we don't, so Mark's not running around first thing in the morning trying to figure out who's covering for whom, and not being in the classroom like we want him to be, so. And speaking of Mark, I'd like him to hang on for our executive session briefly, so that we can, and along with the negotiations piece that I wanted to update you on, we do have a personnel issue that I'd like him to speak with you about.
Where have we publicized the vacancies and subs? Where have we been publicizing that?
We have publicized in the reporter before, and we, we, for the teachers, we, there's an OLOS, it's called OLOS, it's a statewide system that publishes, so anybody who is in that profession pretty much knows in New York State to check that. But locally, you know, with, I think just in the reporter probably is the only thing that we've done.
Do you have online?
On our, on our sites too, and on our sites too, so. We have those, but I just want to up the stakes a little bit.
We're putting it up on social media, something like that, to get it out?
We have, we have been doing that. That's it for me.
All right. Any questions for any administrators? All right, so there is a need to go into executive session, and this is a matter relating to a particular employee and union negotiations. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. All right, so we need to sign the government class papers.
12:45.
And 12:45.